I call this meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Jackie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting of the courthouse annex on Thursday, August 27, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Raferty called the meeting to order, President J.C. Raferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, Kerry Wallace, County Administrator, Captain Perry, Assistant County Administrator, General Dean Hopper, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 2015 with the following correction on page three, paragraph three. Kerry Wallace approved -- Kerry Wallace provided a review of the Gerber Life Insurance Company application and schedule for excess loan insurance. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved a request from Craig Presar, WVU Extension Service Representative, to use the courthouse plaza on Friday, September 11, 2015, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of the CEO's annual mini fair. Ron Pugh, Buchanan City Council Representative, appeared before the commission in ready proclamation which recognizes Upshur County's first responders. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign individual proclamations for the following first responders: Emergency Site Protection, Upshur County Communications Center, Upshur County Emergency Medical Services Incorporated, Health Net, Arrow Medical Services Basic, West Virginia Natural Resources, Police, West Virginia State Police, Buchanan Office of Emergency Management, Buchanan Police Department, Office of the Sheriff of Upshur County, Shelbyville Volunteer Fire Department, Warren District Volunteer Fire Department, Alamo Volunteer Fire Department, Banks District Volunteer Fire Department, Buchanan Fire Department, and Community Emergency Response Team. The proclamation designates September 11, 2015, as a day to pay honor to and recognize the first responders who, quote, "courageously and unselfishly risked their lives to protect the safety of our community visitors passing through our town and county and our commercial establishments," unquote. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign correspondence to Paul Chapman, requesting cleanup of the residential property per referral from the Upshur County State Structures and Sites Ordinance Enforcement Board for case number 091114-01. J.C. Raferty reviewed correspondence from G. Paul Richter, Buchanan River Watershed Association Incorporated, WCIP Administrator, requesting a letter of support for applying for financial support for the Heritage Room project. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved to send the letter of support. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the appointment of Rick Harlow as member of the Safe Structures and Sites Ordinance Enforcement Board to fill the unexpired fire chief vacancy. The term will expire on June 30, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the appointment of Jonathan Teague as member of the Upshur County Emergency Management Affairs Bureau for a three-year term ending in 2018. J.C. Raferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, Upshur County Solid Waste Authority Community Shred Event Flyer. Two agendas and/or notices of meaning, there were none. Meeting minutes as listed, meetings as listed, number five appointments made or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices to payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following consolidation of lane tracks as listed. At 10:30 a.m., Kerry Wallace opened and reviewed a bid from Jenkins Ford for the purchase of vehicles for the Upshur County Sheriff's Department. The bid in the amount of $25,624 was for a 2016 four-door Explorer and that requirement required specifications. The quote did not include pricing for a sedan. No other bids were received. After discussion, Kerry Wallace's request to place a call for documents to inquire about the reason for receiving no pricing for a sedan as was requested. The bid request was for SUV and sedan. The commission recessed at 10:35 a.m. The commission reconvened at 10:37 a.m. Kerry Wallace advised that pricing for a sedan would not be available for several weeks and would then need to be redid. After discussion, Sheriff David Kaufman advised that since the total of the cost for the SUVs was within the allotted budget, that he would accept that option. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the Jenkins Ford bid in the amount of $76,872, which was $25,624 times three, for the purchase of three 2016 Ford Explorers. Terry Joe found an addressing and mapping coordinator, appeared before the commission to discuss naming a private driveway per the requirements of addressing and mapping ordinance per the established guidelines for naming the road. Certified letters were sent to the property owners of record with a deadline for participation. An application was received four days after the deadline recommending the name Ball Hollow Road from one of the property owners. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved Ball Hollow Road as submitted by Claudia Ball for a private driveway located off the Sandstone Hollow Road. Terry recommended that the commission select a different name since the property owner did not meet the guideline requirements and the possible conflict with current road names. The commission recessed at 11:30 a.m. The commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. Sheriff David Kaufman appeared before the commission to discuss public safety and requested to make an executive session. On motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission adjourned the executive session at 1:00 p.m. for West Virginia Code 6-98-4. Presidents J.C. Raferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Kerry Wallace, Captain Perry, David Kaufman, and deputies Rocky Hattman Kelly and Virgil Miller. The commission returned to open the session at 2:15 p.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Raferty, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission adjourned at 2:20 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additional corrections as noted in the minutes? I would make one request. There were a number of, I think, four, three or four different road names that were provided by Terry Joe at that meeting in which we discussed the road name. Could you please find out what those names were? I remember a couple, most of them started the other day. But if you could have those included in the minutes, if you would.
Yeah, there were two. Ball Hollow.
No, I mean, she mentioned that she would prefer.
Oh.
There were like three names that she requested that we consider.
Oh, okay. Yeah, A, N, S, something. Okay.
I don't remember the conflict that occurred.
Yeah, I was going to question that as well. I didn't know that there was any conflict with existing names. I did not, to my recollection. Do you have commissioners, you call?
No, there wasn't any conflict.
I don't think conflict is a term that was, was a...
We just added the sports choice, Ball Hollow.
Yeah, the three of them, right.
She said that since he didn't meet the guidelines, that thought we ought to give another name. But with that being said, we went ahead and voted for the name that one of residents wanted.
The guidelines being strictly, there was a couple of days and it was over at the time.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any other corrections or additions? If not, I would request a motion to approve the minutes, as read with the exception of the attendant.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, today we have, at 9:15, we have Robert Skinner, Vice President for Advancement of West Virginia Wesleyan College, Pamela Walsh, West Virginia Wesleyan College President, the proclamation declaring September 3, 2015, through December 31, 2015, the West Virginia Wesleyan College Appreciation Days throughout Upshur County. At 9:30, we have Virginia Gallion, a National Federation of Independent Business Representative, for discussion regarding petition of obtain injunction to stop the expansion of the Clean Water Act, which is, I think, also called the Waters of the USA Act, which has just went into effect. And we have at 9:45, we have John Buck Edwards, Deputy Emergency Management Manager of Upshur County Office of Emergency Management, providing alternative, excuse me, writing update on the project at the Hampton Huguenot Beach area. We have about five minutes before our first appointment, so we'll go down to items for discussion, action, or approval. The first two, as they relate to the purpose of Mr. Edwards' appearance, we'll postpone those until after his presentation. So we'll skip down item number three, which is review and signature of resolution declaring September 13, 2015, through September 19, 2015, as Religious Freedom Week throughout Upshur County. That is a resolution, as they're represented from the organization proposing that resolution in the presence of today's meeting. Well, the resolution has been prepared and commission members have hopefully got a chance to read the resolution, and basically states religious freedom is a foundation of our country. The founding fathers considered that to be a very freedom of religion, freedom from, freedom of religion, not freedom from religion, was founding cornerstone of this country. And as such, there's a request for us to support religious freedom. Not exactly what it means religious freedom to either expulse or to practice a religion of your choice or to do otherwise. So with that being said, are there any comments, any of the other commissioners on this issue? If not, I would request a motion to authorize the signature on that resolution.
So moved.
But in that first, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Second.
The second, well, I take that for granted. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side, motion carries. Okay, next we go down to item number four, review and signature of letter to the Buchanan River Watershed Association Incorporated, expressing the Upshur County Commission's support in its submission for funds for the Office of Service Mining Reclamation Enforcement Cooperative Development Program. That is basically going to require a signature of the president of the commission. So I would request a motion to approve the president of the commission to sign such a memorandum.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And as now, 9:15, we have Mr. Robert Skinner and we have Pamela Walsh, President of West Virginia Wesleyan College. If you'd like to take the podium, make your presentation. I see Robert's dressed in his black blazer and orange tie.
Yeah. Happy birthday.
Pamela, Pamela has, has orange and black as well.
Well, this is a great day for the college. Actually, on this date in 1890, 70 students entered the doors and took the first class. And no, Commissioner Brady, I was not among the 70 students.
I was just going to ask you that, Bob.
Almost, no.
We have prepared proclamation. I'd like to read this proclamation and then ask you for your signature. Whereas West Virginia Wesleyan College has been an integral part of Buchanan Upshur community since 1890, contributing immensely to the cultural, educational, and economic development of our region, and whereas WVWC offers a varied arsenal curriculum in the arts and sciences, pre-professional, professional, and graduate studies, and has long been recognized as one of the finest liberal arts higher educational institutions in the nation upon the most beautiful campus in West Virginia, and whereas during the fall 2015 semester, WVWC shall celebrate its 125th anniversary, and whereas Buchanan and all of Upshur County are proud and honored to serve as home among the hills to the wonderful WVWC campus community and for the thousands of students who have attended Wesleyan and who served throughout the world as proud ambassadors of WVWC and our BU community, and whereas the County Commission desires to celebrate West Virginia Wesleyan College's milestone anniversary while recognizing the significance and contributions of our college to our community, state, and region, now therefore, we, members of the Upshur County Commission pursuant to the power and authority duty vested in us, do hereby proclaim the period commencing September 3 through December 31, 2015, to be WVWC Appreciation Days throughout all of Upshur County. We further urge all residents to join the commission and our county's employees in expressing their thanks and appreciation for WVWC's excellent work and mission and wishing our college the best success in the future, and especially during this wonderful period of celebrating 125 years of excellence in higher education. Given under our respective hands and the official seal of the Upshur County Commission this third day of September 2015.
Thank you, Bob. President, do you have anything to say? After Bob's proclamation.
Just a word or two. Just want to thank everybody for their continued support. It's been a fantastic series of years from 1890 on and ups and downs and swings and lows, but I think it keeps this community thriving and we're very proud of the collaborative nature of the school and the community.
And I echo those comments. I think one thing that does make Buchanan a outstanding community is the presence of being a college town.
Absolutely.
The diversity, the resources that the college brings. We have an intern working here in the county courthouse now, helping to draft some, I guess we'd call it, policy issues that we've been looking at. There, the influence that the college has extends well beyond Upshur County, certainly within Upshur County and within the city of Buchanan. I won't speak for the mayor who's back there, but I know that there has, you know, has historically been a tradition of cooperative work among each other. For that, I as a citizen, not as president of the commission, but as a citizen, who have had, I mean, only one of my family doesn't have a Wesleyan degree, so that makes me a minority in my own family, but I appreciate what you've done for my children.
You didn't want to hear that.
I appreciate what you've done, you know, the education. My granddaughter now attending Wesleyan as well. Do any commissioners wish to comment?
Well, I'd just like to concur. I certainly appreciate what you all have done for my son, which graduated from West Virginia Wesleyan College. It is an asset to Upshur County, and I appreciate everything that West Virginia Wesleyan College does.
I think the city and the county are fortunate to have Wesleyan College here. Thank you.
Well, having said that, is there a motion to approve the adoption or the approval of this proclamation?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we will be proud to sign this. Would you like some photographs? Okay.
We would, yes.
Representatives of Wesleyan would approach the bench. Be on the bench.
Be on the bench.
Where you want.
I think you're behind us if you would.
You sure you want to?
I would trust him.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
It's nice, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to meet you. Thank you so much.
We're happy, we're happy, sir.
I liked that you said you couldn't get in.
I doubt that I could have. But I tell you one thing that also I'm appreciative of, and I think the people in the community need to be aware of, unless they're not already aware of it, that Wesleyan does really try to connect with West Virginia or Upshur County students, and the scholarships and the advantages they've tried to provide to Upshur County residents and students is just a further, further sign of the commitment they have to the community, and I think that's to be lauded as well.
And make it affordable.
Yes.
Well, we've been very fortunate for so many people to leave money to the institution to help provide the scholarships down through the years. So we have over 600 endowed scholarships, and many of them are set aside for Upshur County students.
Right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, there are a few more minutes to our next meeting, our next presentation. The next item on business is number five. We have review and signature of statement of support submitted by the Coalition for Safe Affordable Food. This letter supports establishing the FDA as a nation of single authority over use and labeling of genetically modified ingredient products. Having had a chance to review that, I don't know if we need to read it or maybe highlight some of the, some of the major strikes of that. And it's basically a coalition of safe, affordable food as in lieu of American farmers, concerned parents, food producers, and consumers who support a national science-based labeling standard for all products containing genetically modified ingredients, GMOs. And basically, they wish that we support or sign a petition supporting that the United States Food and Drug Administration, FDA, be provided with accurate information, and even that they be responsible for the labeling and whatnot of these foods. And the three specific areas of their interest are to eliminate confusion, provide consistency, by establishing the FDA as the nation of single authority over the use and labeling of GMO products, moving the uncertainty and inconsistency of having multiple standards across the 50 states. Advance food safety by empowering the FDA to review new GMOs or traits before they enter the marketplace and to require labeling of GMO ingredients if they find a health, safety, and nutritional issue present. And the third issue is to inform consumers by establishing FDA standards for companies that choose to voluntarily label their products as containing or not containing GMO ingredients, including a federal definition of the term "natural." And apparently it's pending in House Resolution Number 111599, labeled the SAFE Act or Food Labeling Act introduced by Representative Mike Pompeo of Kansas and Representative Butterfield of Carolina, establishing this much-named foreign standard under the FDA. Having said that, there's also another issue at hand that I commented on publicly before, and that is the country of origin labeling. There is now a move afoot to remove from food products labels that identify the country of origin where the product originated. If you were to go into a shop supermarket, not in the meat counter in the butcher shop area, and you were to pick up a packet of meat, whatever would be labeled as to what country that pig, or cow, or cattle, sheep, whatever, was raised in and then brought to market in where it was raised. Clearly, that's labeled on all of the food that's in the butcher area. But also, if you go into the canned goods, you can find that certain products, if you look at the label, are imported from other countries. I think that that is an important right of the consumer to know where the origin of his food or her food is. It's a simple thing, and many times we don't take advantage of looking at the labels, but I think it's important that the labels be there and be maintained for the public. But there's a move afoot now to remove those labeling. I recognize we're an international community now, more and more, but I think as consumers, certainly we have the right to know where our food is produced. If for another reason, then we can make decisions that are informed as to whether or not we want to purchase certain products. In any event, is there a motion to approve the genetically modified food legislation to support it?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Therefore, motion passes. Brings to have that signed. Number six, review and signature manual maintenance agreement between PTS Solutions and the Upshur County Commission, effective September 15, 2015. This maintenance cost on a per year basis is $700 and covers incident software in the Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of that agreement?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have correspondence from Tanisha C. Travis, Senior Justice Program Specialist, Division of Justice and Community Services, regarding recent justice assistant grant award. Review and signature of grant contract agreement between the Division of Justice and Community Services and the Upshur County Commission, resolution, standard conditions, and two certifications. I'll look back and you can check as well, remind yourselves that this is a, and it deals with a contract between Upshur County Commission and say, my glasses, I'm getting old. Upshur County Middle School, provide funding for resources at the Upshur County Middle School PR officers. So, I'll try to pull the glasses back. Is there a motion to approve the entering of this contract with the Office of Justice Service Division?
So moved.
Actually, aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Steve Malheur, 911 Director, requesting Sierra Richard Warner, full-time telecommunications trainee, to be promoted to regular full-time telecommunications at her current wage rate of $11 per hour effective immediately. Do I have approval for that motion?
So moved. Second.
That recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. We have correspondence from Brian Gaudet, Circuit Clerk, requesting employment of Harley Slyers as full-time deputy circuit clerk at the starting wage of $9 per hour, effective September 21, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that request?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have correspondence from David E. Gottman, Prosecutor Attorney, regarding the vacant legal assistant position, approval of full-time legal assistant job advertisement in a display ad format. Applications must be received by close of business on September 21, 2015. The starting rate will be $11.75 per hour.
I'll make one correction.
Yes.
The starting wage rate will be up to $11.75 per hour.
No more than $11.75. Is there a motion to approve the placement of that ad?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next, we have approval of advertisement for part-time fire feet clerk at the wage rate of $15 per hour. Applications must be received by close of business on September 11, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Number 12, approval of Odessa Upshur Animal Control Facility volunteer Cheyenne Martin. Is there a motion to approve her volunteer, accepting her as a volunteer?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have, one minute left. We have approval of Upshur County Commercial Dog Breeding Operations, Upshur County Commercial Dog Breeder Permit Application, and West Virginia Commercial Breeder... Dog Breeder Permit Application, and West Virginia Commercial Breeder Annual Checklist.
I was asking to table that discussion.
Table that.
I spoke with them with Rome County Commission. Ms. McDonald had suggested we follow their guidelines that they set forth last year, 2014. However, I spoke with them, and they're having some issues because they did not draft an ordinance to go along with these.
So, we're not in ordinance time?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, it is now 9:30. I believe Virginia Gallion, National Federation Independent Businesses, discussion regarding petition to obtain injunction to stop the expansion of the Clean Water Act of the waters of the USA. Is Ms. Gallion here to make their representation? Okay, she is not here at this time, so we'll proceed then to items for information. We have revised the County Sheriff's Announcement Statement, for period ending July 2015. We have a chance and notices of meetings. We have meeting minutes. We have meetings, scheduled meetings this month, where his commission members and staff attend. Appointments needed for upcoming. We have a vacant fire board position still?
It was not listed on previous agenda, but you do have a vacancy in the first district.
Okay, the first district community representative. So, if anyone wishes to volunteer residing in the first district, which basically is the corporate city of the Canada-Slot Line area, you might request to contact, you would be requested to contact the county administrator or assistant administrator if you place on that agenda, if you so wish. We have tabled items. Next regular meeting will be September 17, 9 o'clock here in the House Meeting Room. Attention, the September 10, 2015 regular meeting of this commission will be canceled. So, we'll be meeting in two weeks. Going back, and our next scheduled appearance is Ms. Gallion, 39, 11. Ms. Gallion?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I am ready to proceed if you are ready to make your appearance.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Is it Gallion?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, I am the representative for this area for the National Federation of Independent Business. We are an activist organization. We're the largest small business organization in the United States representing small business, including farmers, professionals, anyone that gets, that contributes to your economic stability here. We, our members are very, very involved and very concerned about a new regulation expansion by the EPA. It's called the Waters of the U.S. Rule. Has anyone here heard about it? Okay. Just to kind of bring you up to date, this, they closed it last year, and where NFIB comes into this, many of our members are farmers, they're excavators, they're people that dig in the dirt. This is an expansion that will affect anybody that turns over dirt for a living, because it's the old rule that was made back in the 1970s, applied to navigable waters, meaning anything you could put a boat in, the EPA had jurisdiction over the cleanliness and the management of that water. This expansion that was proposed says that they're going to go further, and any land that holds water more than eight hours after a rainstorm, that you would need to get an EPA permit to dig on your own land if there's any water standing there. So, if you look at our industry structure in this state, as it applies to agriculture, as it applies to mining, as it applies to the gas and oil industry, it's going to back all of those people up to wait on an EPA permit. The probably most prohibitive thing about it is that the average cost of an EPA permit under the navigable water rule right now is $270,000. So, I don't know too many farmers that didn't come up with that much money to put a fence along the creek bank if they're forced to get this permit. Now, they have not had jurisdiction over dry land before, or over, you know, land, surface land before. So, it's possible that those costs will be adjusted down, but the fines will not be adjusted down. Any EPA violation is $37,500 per day, period, no matter what rule that you're violating. So, if you don't get the permit, and the EPA does find you, even though, you know, you think, well, they're never going to find me back here in this holler, or they're never going to find me where I am, you'd be surprised where the EPA would find you. I've been down to Moorfield, and they just cruise the chicken farms down there. They go to hotspots. It's like the OSHA travels up and down, I call it lumber road, from Mill Creek to Elkins. You know, they're there all the time because of all the people that are, you know, involved in the lumber industry. So, just to fast forward, the expansion is, the way the EPA did it is a violation of federal law, by law, and our organization fought to get this law in place. They have to go through a regulatory analysis that looks at the cost of the bill in relation to what benefit it is, cost versus benefit. And if there's a certain formula that they use, that if they exceed, there's more cost than the benefit we're reaping, then by federal law, they can't. They either have to adjust the language in the bill, or adjust the enforcement, or they need to go back to the drawing board. They refused to do the regulatory analysis, even when we testified before the Senate and the House, and the House, both members or chambers of Congress submitted bills to them to force them to do this regulatory analysis, and they just poo-pooed it. They didn't do it. And on the 27th of May, the President signed off on this. On the 28th of August, it was to start being enforced. EPA is all geared up and ready to go. They've got extra officers that were hired in Philadelphia, which is where our EPA officials come out of, ready to go out and start enforcing this. So, just sit back for a minute and think about the impact that it's going to have on this economy, if everybody has to get backed up two to four months to wait on an EPA permit. What we've done as an organization is, we, the President signed off on the 27th, the following Monday, we filed suit in federal court in Tulsa, Oklahoma. It was us, it's not just us. It is the Chamber of Commerce, and the Farm Bureau filed an amicus brief. There are, I think, 55 different organizations representing the small business communities in the United States that say this is not a good rule. And they're on the side of pushing the EPA to comply by federal law. It is a law that they should be complying by. So, our concern was that on the 28th, the EPA would begin enforcing this, letting the fines, forcing people to buy the permits, and if we go through the process of justice here, it could take up to a year to a year and a half to go through the courts. Meantime, the EPA is out here enforcing this. They're not going to give you a refund if you've gone ahead and done what the law says you have to do, and down the road, they find out the Supreme Court rules that they were in violation of federal law. So, to stop them from enforcing this rule, last, it was to be started enforcement on Friday, last Thursday, NFIB's legal team did find a federal judge in North Dakota who filed, who issued an injunction to stop enforcement of this. The only problem is, it's only in 13 states, and West Virginia is not one of them. Now, we don't know whether the EPA is going to just pull back everywhere, because there is an injunction in place, and it could be expanded if the judge sees fit to do that. But the reality is, is that at no other time in America do we really need to stand up and say, this is our land, you know, you can't come in here and tell us what we can do on our land. We'll be happy. I don't know of any farmer, any business owner that I've talked to that doesn't want to be a good steward of the land within reason. And this seems to escape all reason because of the costly nature of the fines and the permits. So, in order to gain momentum on this, both here, if anybody wants to fill these out, these are petitions that we will present, both in the case, saying, these are the Americans that are behind making sure the EPA goes back and redraws the lines around this rule. The really threatening thing is, it says right in the rule, case-by-case basis, they don't tell you how much standing water. They don't tell you what the rule is. The way that it stands, farmers out in the Midwest will need an EPA permit to open up irrigation ditches and to close irrigation ditches. And so, it leaves the rule open for selective enforcement. That is a dangerous thing. We need, if there's going to be a rule like this, there needs to be specifications around it, and ones that don't tie the hands of the American people. So, I do have the petitions, if anyone here would like to fill out a petition on this to support making the EPA comply by federal law. If you don't want to do this, and you want to do some research, our organization has these petitions online at NFIB.com, and we'll be happy to entertain anyone that wants to go there and fill out a petition. It's open to members and non-members. This is a critical issue, right here in the middle of, you know, you have several farmers, you have the gas and oil industry. This could shut you down all winter, you know, if it's allowed to be enforced.
Are all permits $250,000?
$271,000 is the average cost of permits. I do have an information sheet on here, a little...
For about 20 years, I've driven the Mississippi and hunted, and hunted around their cotton fields, and that's a kind of clay soil. If it's raining, there's water staying, and there's beautiful days.
Yeah.
So, they would be able to buy without permission?
Nope. You wouldn't be able to dig a post hole in. Here's the, here's the strange thing about it. Under the old Waters of the U.S. Rule, the EPA is, and this is coming from the east, from the Maryland-Chesapeake Bay watershed, they're saying that farmers have to fence off those streams and their ponds from cows, and pump the water to a different source and make them drink out of a water trough. They don't want the cows to poop them streams. So, if you're going to fence off a stream, you're going to need an EPA permit to dig the post holes around that stream. You know, it's, you can come up with so many scenarios. Of course, we as an organization are going to think of the worst scenarios, but I think all of us here have seen the unbelievable stories, you know, where somebody has kind of bent a law that's on the books to serve a different purpose. This one is open to interpretation and allows the federal government to bend the law, gives them the authority to bend this law to control what goes on with our land. And if anything, in my seven years of doing this, that I've learned is that people in West Virginia value their land tremendously. And we don't want it to be, we don't want how we use our land taken away from us, or really to be controlled. We do want to be good stewards. We want to make sure we're not dirtying up the planet, but it all has to be within reason, you know. So, here's informational sheets, shall I just pass them around?
Certainly. But you might be laying over there, and anyone wishing to pick one up when they get back to meeting, we'll find it. In addition to what you're saying, the Supreme Court passed relative Clean Air Act about a month and a half ago. The issue you're raising regarding the cost of implementing the legislative statute and everything was not taken into consideration by the EPA when they set clean air standards. And therefore, the Supreme Court found in favor of commissioners. And as a result of that, the EPA was ordered by the Supreme Court basically to go back and redraft their regulations to account for the cost of implementing what you're saying in terms of the law that's on the books. The EPA at that time indicated reluctance to follow the Supreme Court mandate.
Yeah.
So, this is just an extension of that, where they, where a government bureaucrat or bureaucrats are making a decision on their own. I'm not taking a position in regards to your issue, but as a general rule of thumb, laws need to be specific, laws need to focus on specific areas that they intend to correct, and not be open to such interpretation that can allow businesses or individuals to be at the mercy of some bureaucrat decides what is good or what is not good for, you know. I think legislatures, Congress has allowed this to occur, they haven't taken this strong stance. I'm talking as a person, individual, not as a commission member, and I see a lot of possible mischief down the road. I think it's a term that they've used.
And just to throw you in on that, NFIB has fought, we actually were called the Supreme Court Issues Awards for people that bring issues before them. NFIB last year won the Supreme Court's Amicus Brief All-Stars. We had 58 different cases before the Supreme Court dealing with federal agencies, not just the EPA, but the NRLD, Department of Transportation. We won 23 of those cases. One of them was the emissions, and what the EPA did on that is, when you burn coal, you've got seven different gases that are regulated that come out of that smoke. What we won on, and that was NFIB's legal team was part of that win, was that was mercury measurement for the coal burning sequestration. Two days later, the President came back and said he's enforcing the carbon monoxide standard. So, we have seven court cases lined up for each of these different components of the emissions on coal plants. It takes an enormous amount of time and energy. We're the only organization that had the guts to take the federal government to court on the healthcare bill, and we've lost that one, you know. Sometimes we do, one vote, but we lost that.
Well, it's important, and I think unfortunately, the public in general doesn't maintain it, and I'm talking for the county, for the city, for the national government. The public does not maintain the vigilance that they should in holding the government bodies responsible, at least to answer questions that, you know, come up. We're open, every Thursday, we meet here, and people come in, present their, you know, like yourself, you can, it's open, anybody can come in and talk about an issue of interest to them. We are a public forum. We, for years, have allowed people to come in, and we may not agree with their premise as individuals or as commissioners, but we allow them to speak, make their case. The public needs to pay attention to these things. The public needs to understand what is occurring on all levels of government.
What I say to... What I say to business owners who say to me, "There's nothing you can do." And I know sometimes it seems overwhelming, it's the they versus us. Two things we need to keep in mind, we pay their salaries, we pay their salaries. It's your hard-earned tax dollars that are paying these people that are supposed to be serving you, but there seems to be a bigger divide between what we think service is and what they think service is. The only way that that's allowed to happen is that we let them fall away from what it is we want. And maybe it's because we have such a diverse voice in America, we're afraid we're going to offend somebody. And I think that has a lot to do with it. But as Americans, you know, we do have freedom of speech and we should speak up when we think we're being trampled on. Sir Thomas Burke was a, an English politician back in the revolution who actually supported America succeeding from the British Crown. And I love his quote when he said, "Evil can only flourish when good men do nothing." So, we, we can no longer afford in this country to be the good men who do nothing and hope, you know, we can't hope that they're going to get it. We have to let them know. We have to have a voice. What our organization does is it gives voice to small business owners. They have a unique set of problems that are a lot of times exacerbated by regulation and laws that favor larger corporations. Yes, sir.
Dennis Corsham, Channel 3. This will be aired to Friday night, which will be tomorrow night. Is there a website or someplace that the viewing public can go to sign these petitions?
Yes. At www.nfib.com. And if you want to go straight to that petition page, it's backslash waters. And if you type that into your URL line, you'll get right there and the petition is there. It'll give you the information sheet that I passed out here and to give you a background on the rule. So, you know, we need support. When we stand before that federal judge in North Dakota, the first thing out of their mouth is always, "How many people do you represent?" If we said 15,000, she would have said, "Hit the road." You know, right now NFIB represents 360,000 members, business owners nationwide, and over 3 million jobs. That's a declining number because you look around and see all of the empty storefronts. Most of our members leave us because they go out of business.
For, for years, when I was a small business owner, I would remember the NFIB as an ideal organization.
We only do what our members tell us to do. There's nobody in our organization who sets an agenda. We, we, we poll and give ballots out to our members on all of these issues. They tell us where to go. We don't have anyone that ever sets policy. Yes, Dennis?
Could you repeat that website one more time for our viewers, please?
Okay. It's www.nfib.com. If you want to get straight to the Waters page, backslash W A T E R S, Waters.
Thank you.
Yes.
How many pages is the rule?
Um, I, this one is pretty short.
One page, two page, three, five?
No, it's actually like 15 pages.
15 pages?
Yeah.
And, and it spells out specifically?
No, that's the problem. It says...
And where can I, where can I get, where can I get to that to read that rule?
You can go to the EPA website and put, and put on the Clean Water Act and the, I think there's a, it's at epa.us.org, I believe. And you can, it, this particular expansion, it's on the expansion. So, if you want to see how this is worded opposed to the Clean Water Act of the 1970s. Look, I know we need to have some, everybody knows, we need to have some regulation on runoff. I've been around some of the streams where there's a lot of excavating going on and there's so much mud in them that the fish can't live, you know. But it's funny, on those particular jobs, I never saw a EPA person anywhere around. But it seems like they magically appear on farms. And sometimes you have to wonder, I'm not saying this is true, sometimes you have to wonder if they don't purposely pick on people who don't have a lot of resources to fight that. Because it's an easy marker, it's an easy fine, you know. So, we as Americans have to start paying attention to this and stop them from these practices. Make them enforce on the people they need to enforce on, you know.
So, it would be best if somebody has a fear, such as one commissioner has a farm, he's worried, I'm sure, sitting there thinking, "I can't do a post hole on my ground anymore." So, it would be advantageous for him to turn around, find the EPA website, look at that expansion, and then read it for himself.
Right.
Because obviously, you know, what you're trying, what you've seemed to have done right here is put the fear of God on these people, you know.
She didn't do it.
I was a small business person. I know. I mean, I was, I was subjected to 10 years in prison for putting a battery on the ground outside my shop. So, you know, now, being my own person, I can do it at my home. But, you know, so, yeah, I understand that. But at the same point, you know, we have, we have a large portion of, we've got a lot of water that comes out of Altracan. And, you know, we're, we're being, you know, crammed at this.
If, if you look at a watershed map of West Virginia, just about the entire northern half of the state is included in what this jurisdiction would involve, yes, there needs to be regulation. But they can't just say that it's on a case-by-case basis. That's saying, "We're going to come out and decide whether this is harmful or not." You need some guidelines as a, as a landowner that we, and it's these kinds of rules that have the blurry areas around the edges that wreak the most havoc, you know. If, if there's more specifics to them, if we know how much water, if we know, you know, what the general rule around it, this was done too quickly and too briefly. And the, the bottom line is, there has to be a reason why they keep saying that they don't want, that we go back to the original issue, not about the rule, but they violated federal law and do not want to comply with federal law. If you violated federal law and said, "I don't care what the law was," you'd be in jail right now.
Miss, you know, I don't want to cut limit today, but we have other business to perform this morning. I would invite you to come back anytime to make a presentation or anyone that opposes you to come.
Oh, please do.
... as well.
And I'd like to thank you for your time here this morning. I know we've got a agenda and we're running a little behind, but as, as a farmer, if that gets through, I would certainly get rid of my cattle and sell my farm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have John Buck Edwards, who is Deputy Emergency Manager of Altracan Office Emergency Management. He's going to provide a detailed update on projects that happened on the Hampton I-10 Bridge area. Mr. Edwards?
Jim and I came to you a couple of weeks ago and made a presentation. Day or two after that presentation, we presented that project to Dominion Resources. And Dominion Resources agreed to fund that project. And the project is to build a boat ramp out at the Hampton Bridge. We had a little issue there that we didn't tell you about at that time. We had a little piece of property there that was kind of on our way. And we weren't sure how we were going to deal with that. We made a phone call to the property owner. Property owner decided to donate that property to County Commission. Since that time, we've had it surveyed, the deep works and the process of being done so that we can have that transfer done within the next few weeks. We're looking at doing the work out there somewhere in the middle of October, getting that boat ramp built. Pretty amazing what we've been able to accomplish in a short period of time. Jim had done a ton of preliminary work there and had done a lot of research and it had been a project that some folks have been wanting to do for a while. The opportunity just presented itself to have somebody that was willing to pay for it and somebody like Creed Bacchanum who was willing to take the lead on, on organizing and managing a project like that. So, we've brought to you a couple of permits today that we need to sign, one for the Department of Natural Resources, who is working with us, who is very supportive of this project and who has already committed some resources to that project. And we also have a permit from the Department of Highways that we need to, in case we get on their encroaching up to that bridge there. I think with the addition of the other property, we're going to be off of their property pretty much. But this way, this gives us an opportunity just to be completely labeled there. Right now, Bryson is working on the design of the boat ramp. We're looking at a ramp, probably in the neighborhood of 160 feet long. And that is due to getting the ramp on a particular grade that's not steep. We'll probably end up concreting the last 40, 50 feet of that ramp so that silt won't be an issue on the ramp. We're also looking at placing some concrete structures in the river where you can back your boat out on it where we don't have to pour concrete in the river where we'd need an additional permit. So, we've also got an organization that's willing to come out there and cut the brush for us and clean that up. The area has the potential to be a pretty nice little park area if, if we wanted to take it to that extent. And it would be a great little addition for that community out there. Once again, you get into the issue of maintenance and upkeep and monitoring that property. We may look at trying to find a civic organization that may want to take that on in order to keep it up and keep it clean and keep it presentable. But, you know, we've made a lot of progress in the past couple of weeks. Things have just kind of fell in place for us and we're going to make that happen in the middle of October. If nothing doesn't come up, then get in our way.
Well, to paraphrase Edmund Burke, as Naskalian raised, "We have two men who did something." And more than just two men, but I mean, you, both of you have been spirititing it from the county perspective. We certainly appreciate that. I know the public would appreciate it as well, once it's completed and everything.
Yeah, I've really been impressed with the preliminary work Jim had done on that project and, you know, we've all worked together. And that's what's great about this, is people coming together, working together. Nobody really wanted to, you know...
Well, I know at some point you'll be able to identify the benefactor that's going to be assisting. I don't think you've done that yet. And that's to be in the future at some point.
Right.
I eagerly await that opportunity as well.
Right. The, we will be constructing a nice sign out there. We're looking for input on the name of that little area out there, whether we call it the Hampton Bridge Boat Ramp or whatever. But we are going to put a plaque up out there to recognize the family and the guy who purchased that property that's donating it to the county.
Let's hope there's no political name attached to it or politician's name attached to it.
There is.
We'll ensure that there isn't if we have anything to say about it.
Personally and publicly, thank the gentleman for, or lady for donating that piece of property. Well, I don't think it's any secret. It's a frame, a Debbie Frame from Gassaway who owned the property. Her father was going, I can't remember his last name, but anyhow, he was from Queens and he had bought the property back in the 50s with the intentions of putting a boat ramp in it. So, when I called her and told her what we wanted to do, she was thrilled that we were going to finally realize his dream and that's why she was so thrilled.
Is he still living or...
No, he's deceased.
So, you'll send a letter of appreciation from the County Commission to...
I think that was a plan that Buck was going to work on, to be able to work together on that.
There's a suggestion, maybe, maybe we could name that boat ramp after him. Well, that's a possibility. That's going to be your boat ramp when it's done, so...
That's the public's boat ramp.
Right. So, we're up for whatever you want to call it.
I do have one question. Has the entire project been funded at this point? Are you still looking for donations?
Well, we'll take donations. Our, I'm, I'm very confident Dominion wants to fund the project. And they have the resources in different areas to fund that project. We've applied for a grant as a formality for a certain dollar amount that won't cover that, but we have the discussions going on with them for the extra funds to do that. So, and currently, like I said, the Department of Natural Resources has provided some stone. And we believe some other folks are going to provide some other resources there as well. So, I'm confident it's going to be completely funded.
Tim, would you like to say?
I just want to expand on that, Mr. Edwards and I have talked about the stages in which this will be. We will proceed and we want to assure you that should funding fail at any point, we're proceeding in steps where the county will not be left holding an incomplete step. We will go with stages that can be done and the use can either be, there will be a use and then we may go to a stage where it can be even more improved. But we will not leave the county with some sort of half-built project, if that's a concern. Also, last week, the commission asked if there were any negatives and we felt the biggest stakeholders in negatives would be the adjoining properties. We went to the adjoining properties and there's a dwelling on either side of the county property, but at this time, they do not, they appear to be unoccupied. And one may be in the, one which is a single bi-hole home may be in the process of being removed.
Well, I never had any doubt you'd accomplish the mission because you're both have a good reputation as accomplishing the goals. So, I've never, never concerned about that aspect of it.
Well, in addition to promises of money, at least three licensed professionals who are residents and business owners in this county have offered professional services which we could not have been at this stage in one week.
That we're at. Well, just earlier, we had a proclamation from West Virginia Wesleyan College, the impact they've had on the community. And this is a unique community. We're a community of size. It is someplace special and we want to keep it that way. Working efforts that you, the efforts that you've made will go beyond just your efforts. And that should be an encouragement to you and we appreciate your efforts.
We appreciate you all being willing to work with us and letting us use that property out there to do that.
Thank you. And feel free to come back anytime to give us updates at your convenience. I know the public will be following if they're interested in it, I'm certain.
I know we are interested in attending the volunteer day once it is set as well. So, please let us know.
Okay, we're looking, probably a Saturday around the middle of October. We're working with them now to try to get the earth, earth-moving equipment in there so that we can get everything to grade and, and all of those things done so that when the volunteers show up, we have something for them to do and they're not standing around watching that equipment work. But we plan on making that a pretty big day with some food and some media and try to really show... really showcase what we can do here in Altracan.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I just want to thank both of you for the outstanding job you have done.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. I believe we, we have two items now, item number one and number two. Item number one deals with the view and signature of West Virginia Department of Highways D-7 Encroachment Permit, information for the project at the Hampton-Ivenhoe Bridge area. And item number two regards the review and signature of office and land and streams, stream activity applications for the project at the Hampton-Ivenhoe Bridge area. Those are both related to the presentation that Mr. Edwards just gave to the commission. So as to both of those, authorization to accept and adopt and sign off on those two documents, I would request a motion.
I'm going to re-sign off on both requests.
Chair, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and we will sign off on those documents.
All right. Thank you. Beg your permission.
Thank you.
I think that completes, other than we have a 1:00 appointment with Stephen Linger and 111 Director regarding Communication Center Management of Patriot, which may lead to an executive session. That's at 1:00. The other items have been handled. I think we have some things to say. That's never ending and I'll take care of that.